Welcome to the Canal Alliance San Rafael School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Stephanie McNally and I am the Advocacy and Policy Senior Manager at Canal Alliance. I will be moderating the candidate forum this evening. As a nonpartisan organization, Canal Alliance neither supports nor opposes any political party or candidate for public office. The San Rafael City Schools Board of Education consists of five members who are elected by district in the San Rafael community to serve four-year terms. This five-member board is the policymaking body that governs both the San Rafael Elementary School District and the San Rafael High School District. The board is charged with providing a quality educational program for students in grades kindergarten through 12 in accordance with the California Constitution, the laws of the state, and adopted board policies. This forum will be recorded and shared after the event. Canal Alliance is not responsible for comments made by the public during this recording, although we will monitor them during the event. Candidates, please speak slowly for the interpreters translating the forum for our Spanish-speaking audience. Time for each answer is limited to three minutes to give each candidate an opportunity to respond to all questions asked during the forum. We ask that the candidates not pose questions to each other. We will begin with opening statements from each candidate. Candidates, you will each have two minutes to introduce yourselves to our audience this evening. Samantha Ramirez, please begin our opening statements. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. Hola a todos. My name is Samantha Ramirez and I am running for school board trustee area one. I went to Venetia Valley and I went to Terra Linda and I went to San Rafael High, class of 2007. I have about 13 years of working in the community at various organizations, including Huckleberry Youth Programs, Canal Alliance, VACR, and I'm currently the Program Coordinator for the Marin County Youth Commission at an organization called the Youth Leadership Institute. I love the students and the families of San Rafael City Schools. I think I would be an amazing trustee because I want to give back to the community that gave me so much. I am qualified. I am passionate. I can connect with the bilingual community and the bicultural community. I'm invested in making our schools and our communities stronger. I'm a working-class person and I can relate to a lot of the experiences of our working-class community. I love our students and our families and I have real experience with equity and I think that the ideas that I have would make such an amazing trustee and that I would be able to connect with the students and the families and I am so excited to be here. So, thank you so much.
That was great. Gina Daly, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gina Daly and I'm running for San Rafael School Board, also in Area One. I'm running because we're in an unprecedented time. The pandemic has laid bare all of the inequities that already existed in society and we need strong leaders who have the skills and experience to navigate this difficult period. My family has very deep ties to San Rafael. My husband, Kiran, grew up in San Rafael and graduated from Terra Linda High School. My in-laws still live in his childhood home and my mom just moved to Terra Linda to be closer to me and her grandkids. I have over almost 20 years of public service experience. I worked for Senator Diane Feinstein, both in Washington DC and also San Francisco. I left her office briefly to work to get my master's in public policy at UC Berkeley and focused on K-12 education policy while I was there. After grad school, I worked as an education program evaluator where my clients were after-school programs and school districts. It was my job to evaluate how these programs and interventions were affecting students and making sure that student outcomes were getting improved by those programs. For the past nine years, I've worked at University of California as a Director of Federal Relations. And in that role at UC Berkeley, I spent a lot of time with our under-res and minority students and our undocumented community and I'm hoping that I can bring that experience to this role. Most importantly, I'm the mom to two young kids, William and Juliette. And everything that I do in the role of Board of Education Trustee, I will lead with empathy and equity at the center of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Lynda Jackson, I'm sorry, Marina Palma, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marina Palma. I am the new Board Trustee representing District Five, which includes our community, which is the Canal community. I am a devoted mother and grandmother who has raised children and grandchildren in the San Rafael School District. I am here to further advocate on behalf of the Latin community, students, and families to find a solution to find a solution to help our students graduate from high school and to get the tools that they need for a better, higher education. I am here to help and hopefully all together can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina. Lynda Jackson, your turn now. Please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Good evening and thank you Canal Alliance for holding this Voto Candidates Forum and for the opportunity to talk with the Latino community about San Rafael Schools. My name is Lynda Jackson and I'm running for San Rafael School Board for Area Three, which is most of central San Rafael, west of Highway 101. My husband, Jim Stone, and I have three daughters who went to San Pedro, Coleman, Davidson, and San Rafael High. I started out as a classroom volunteer, became a president of the PTA, and was editor of the San Rafael High School Parents Newsletter. My goal is to have San Rafael Schools be a place of educational equity for every student who walks through the doors of each San Rafael School. We must respond to the imperatives of the day, starting with climate change, immigration justice, educational equity, and COVID-19. We must do that within the capacity of our budget, with the best staff we can get, and in the best facilities possible. I am proud to have served in the Peace Corps in Ecuador for two years, where I learned Spanish and what it's like to live in another country. And today, I'm grateful for the opportunity to have served on the San Rafael Board for 14 years. I support more Latinos working in our schools, advanced classes for all students, restorative justice instead of discipline, stronger student voice, more community partnerships, and programs to help parents. I look forward to continuing my advocacy for academic excellence in San Rafael Schools. I ask for your support. Lynda Jackson, San Rafael School Board.
Thank you, Lynda, and thank you to all of the candidates. It's a great way to learn more about all of you. Let's go ahead and get started with our forum this evening. Before we begin tonight's forum, I would like to provide some high-level context on the issues and inequities that were impacting the Latino community and the academic success of Latino students before the pandemic. As a resident of Marin County who raised two daughters that attended public schools from kindergarten through high school, my experience as a white parent was exceptional. I know that is not the case for Latino students and their families. According to the Race Council's website, Marin County ranks the first most racially disparate county in California. The pandemic has exacerbated the inequities in economic opportunity, health access, housing, and education, as reported by this website as well as other recently published studies. As Omar Carrera, who runs Canal Alliance, notes, "Structural inequalities in the canal long predate the pandemic, but COVID has made them far worse." Local health officials are telling us that Latinos make up about 16% of Marin's population and account for over 70% of COVID-19 cases in the county. When schools transitioned to remote learning, students in the canal were at a distinct disadvantage due to lack of internet access and the devices required to fully participate in online learning. This issue existed before COVID-19, as well as issues related to access to classes required to apply to the state, university, and college systems, and support for newcomers and English learners. In November 2018, San Rafael City Schools partnered with the Education Trust West and Marin Promise Partnership to conduct an educational equity audit for the district. The purpose of the audit was to closely analyze college and career readiness for San Rafael City Schools with a focus on equitable access and success within schools, among schools, and among groups of students. Our first two questions are based on the findings of the Educational Equity Audit for San Rafael City Schools. How would you address the equity issues in A to G completion rates? That is, the classes needed to apply for the UC or CSU system. Furthermore, how would you make sure that the change is both systematic and sustainable? Gina Daly, please begin the response to this question. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to talk about this. This was actually one of the first things I noticed even before reading the equity audit. So, as someone who works for University of California, I know how critical it is that we have our high school graduates being able to access our public higher education system. So, the first thing we have to do is make sure that the graduation requirements for San Rafael High and Terra Linda High and Madrone match the A through G requirements to enter into CSU when you see. Those must be in alignment. In order to achieve that, there's a few things we need to do. So, the first thing, and the equity audit mentioned this, we need to do a better job of tracking and making sure when students are not taking the classes they need to be able to complete an A through G, that we have a way to systemically figure that out and communicate that both to counselors and also to the families and students themselves. Often, what we see in issues of equity is that there's a lot of unspoken rules that white parents are able to access through their support systems that students of color and families of color don't know about. So, that means we have to put those systems into the education system. We should be using different kinds of web formats to be able to track our students meeting their third-grade literacy. Are they at, because there's huge achievement gaps there. That means that we need to be investing in preschools and making sure that there's enough early childhood education for every student. Another critical marker is eighth-grade math and whether people are at grade level. That's another huge gap between students of color and white students in San Rafael Schools. So, in order to do that, we need to make sure that they're having every single support they need. A few ideas on this. I think that we should have classes that are a combination of new arrivals that are English language learners and longer-term English language learners in addition to English native speakers. That would provide the support systems for English language learners to be able to navigate these classes a little bit better. The other thing we should think about is, why aren't we teaching math classes or science classes in Spanish? Math and science are universal languages. There's no reason why those classes have to be taught in English. And this could be a critical way for English language learners to be able to be doing the academic work that they are ready for without holding them back because they're still learning English. I think there are a lot of things we could be doing to address equity and I'm glad that the Education Trust West had a lot of great ideas. I think there are many more things we could be doing and I look forward to working on this issue.
Thank you, Gina. Our next response will come from Marina Palma. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Hi, everyone. My personal opinion on A to G is that we have had an educational system that has not been effective for many students and more for Latino students. As a mother and grandmother, I have experienced that my children did not receive the classes they needed to prepare them for higher education. I admit that I wasn't really involved in their education because all I could think of was how to support their family. I feel many children were robbed from their dream of attending a higher education because as they get their high school diploma, it didn't really mean that they were ready to go to a higher education. For those of you who might not be familiar with what A to G means, these are classes that our children need to be able to pass an entry level to a four-year education. Those classes include math for three years, English for four years, history, social studies for two years, laboratory sciences for three years, language, other than English for three years, and visual performing for one year. So, I think that the solution could be that we need to create a policy that will make it mandatory for all children to receive the A to G classes starting in the ninth grade. I think we need bicultural teachers to guide students and parents on the child's goal of a higher education. We need the right teachers who will understand the struggles that students and parents go through. We need to find funds to support after-school programs. We need parents to get involved in their children's education. Only parents and children should make the decision on the child's future. We all need to work together on this one and this is something that is really going to help us all in the near future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marina. Our next response will come from Lynda Jackson. You have three minutes to share your answer.
... through G is. I didn't know as a parent until I got, my daughter came to high school and I learned what were the courses that she needed from the high school counselors. I also, at the time, I was a mentor with 10,000 Degrees and I was mentoring students, first-generation immigrant students wanting to go to college, looking at their transcripts and wondering why were they ever taking a course that was not one of those that Marina outlined that are needed in order to apply for college. As a trustee, I advocated for the equity audit, for EdTrust to come to San Rafael and help us understand what we needed to change so all of our students had the same opportunities to be able to apply and go to college. I want to recognize that not all students want that path and so for me, it's coming up with a program that provides an option for everybody. I had a brother who was not on that path and would not have stayed on it if that was the only option that he had. So, whatever we come up with has to be working with students and with the counselors and with our community to come up with something that meets the needs for every student so there isn't any failure. There are newcomers who come to our schools, our high schools, 16-years-old, in our high schools, living the absolute dream and hope of the future. A through G would not have served them. But what we did was we changed our graduation requirements and our course for them and so they could be on the path to be able to graduate and go to college at Marin, which many of them, that was their dream. So, that's an example of how you can make an A through G program that meets the needs of all the students. Community partners are also a huge effort in this because we cannot in public education do it all alone. So, groups like 10,000 Degrees, Next Generation Scholars, and then groups that teach parents about how to be their advocates for their students to go to college, such as PK and the Parent Services Projects, and of course, Canal Alliance, they all make the difference for families in understanding how our system works, our education system works in high schools so kids can go to college. And finally, we can't do this without the teachers. The teachers are the ones who teach the classes. They work with us on curriculum. So, in partnership with them, we can, we need to make sure as many of our classes are A through G that students are taking A through G classes so that when they apply to CSU and UCs and private schools that they all have that opportunity to go to college when they graduate. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Our final response will come from Samantha Ramirez. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Okay, so I love this question because I feel like I could talk about it forever. So, I have a few things to say. I am the daughter of immigrants, so I know what it's like to be a first-generation student here in the United States and so I was a transfer student. So, basically, I went to a community college and then transferred to a university and I was able to earn my bachelor's degree in five years. So, I also agree with Lynda that the A through G requirements is great because we want more students to be eligible for college, but that's just not the path for everybody. And so, I think coming up with a solution where we really educate our students in our community on the different pathways and they can choose what's best for them because I also think that when we talk about equity, you can choose trades and you can do different jobs and you can be really successful. College is not the only way to be successful, even though it does help you be successful. I also want to share that I was able to work with Huckleberry's Wellness Academy the first year that it started and was there for the first two years. And so, I have experience working in these college access programs and I think the college access program and I think that they provide a very important service, but we need more equity because those programs can't take all of the students. So, I think that we need to replicate and have more opportunities so more students can participate and get to college if they need to. I also think that we definitely do need more early childhood education and we need to start engaging the community and the families in these topics when they're little. I think Gina alluded to the disparities between like third-grade reading levels and things like that. So, already at a young age, we're being put on these tracks where we're not going to be able to reach certain goals and I think that we have to address that at a systematic level and provide the same opportunities to everybody. Early childhood education, college opportunities, as well as engaging the parents. Because when we want to support students and young people, we need to support their families and support the entire community. And so, I think that we need to share all of the things that have been successful about programs like Wellness Academy and 10,000 Degrees, Next Generation Scholars. How do we combine everything that they've learned and provide it to all students? Because that's how we can achieve greater equity. And I think we also need to nurture not only the college path, but you know, trades and the arts. I really think that in terms of equity, we always forget about art and creativity, but that helps people and it helps students specifically be the best that they can be. And so, I think that, I also want to highlight experience that I had with newcomer students at Davidson. I was able to pilot a program for two years and I learned so much. I learned that students are really excited about learning the language and trying to do the best that they can, but they need wraparound services. I was only able to meet with them for one day and it wasn't enough and so I would love to do more newcomer work and I'm super excited.
Thank you, Samantha. We're going to move on to our next question now. The district's 2017-2018 graduation rate for English language learners was 37.5%, which is significantly lower than both the county rate at 51.1% and the state rate at 67.9%. What actions would you take to improve the graduation rate for English language learners in San Rafael Schools? Marina Palma, please begin the response to this question. You have three minutes to share your answer.
So, when it comes to English as a second-language students, I think that they are the more affected. We face a few problems here. As some of you already mentioned, the newcomers. For the newcomer students, they face the barriers of the language, the new culture, adoption, and trauma. Trauma involving whatever was happening in the country they came from, trauma involving the way they got here, how they got here, trauma also involving those who've been separated from their families. The other problem that I see happening is those English as a second-language students whose reality is to work. So, I think that the possible solutions for newcomers is to create a program so they can become bilingual students as soon as possible. I think that we need to hire bicultural counselors who will follow through with newcomers and their parents or guardians. I think that we need to hire bicultural teachers that our ESL students can identify with. We need to connect with immigrant family-oriented agencies and Dominican University to provide some type of mentorship, some kind of mental health services, new culture, and other services. Let's try to find funds to expand existing after-school programs for ESL students. Like, for example, the one that I know of is Canal Alliance. And many of them, okay, it comes to my mind that many of those are young students that need to work. They don't do it just to support their families here. They also do it to support their families in their country, family members that they left. And I will add that also, some of them are the first ones actually going to school or going to a high school. So, the possible solution for me is that we need to understand their reality and support their education with the proper bicultural counselors at school for them and their family. Parents need to learn to motivate their children that their education is the number-one priority and I do hope that we can seriously work on this because there are too many young people out there not being properly guided by school and parents. But if we come together, I'm pretty sure we can see some changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina. Our next response will come from Lynda Jackson. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Thank you, Stephanie. One of the unique things about San Rafael, which we share with East Palo Alto only in the whole Bay Area, as these are the two communities in the Bay Area that are where immigrants arrive. San Rafael has been what I call a portal to the United States since the 1980s when NAFTA started affecting the economic conditions in Mexico and then civil war in Central America countries. As a result, we aren't Latinos. The Latinos who arrive learn English in our schools in San Rafael. Immigrants are not forever in the place where they arrive. They get settled and they move. Some move to other communities, so they do move to other school districts in Marin County. A lot of our students in Marin, in San Rafael, are newcomers. I know...
I know from learning another language that there are four steps. There's understanding it when you hear it, there's speaking it, there's reading it, and then the hardest part is writing it. In San Rafael High School, 24% of our students are English learners. This has an impact in how, what kind of courses you can take and what kind of, what your opportunities are after school or for graduation. So what we have done, I'm really excited, and this is something that COVID-19 brought, we added Rosetta Stone, which is an online program to learn another language specifically for speaking it and understanding it. So I think it's going to help accelerate that learning. And in the elementary schools, we have a SEAL program that we use so that students learn how to read in their native language and then learn how to read in English. And we have seen an improvement over the years in our students as they grow and go from grade to grade. For example, reclassified English learners in math are doing as well as English only in math. And they do better in English. So one of the most important things is to make sure that as English learners advance, that they advance every year at least one level, and there's nobody that is stuck at the same level or goes back. So we have to implement an English learning plan that we adopted last year, and I also look forward to implementing our pathway to a bilingual school in San Rafael. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Our next response will come from Samantha Ramirez. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Okay, great. So I think that what we need to do to increase the graduation rate for our English language learners is we need to talk to them. We need to incorporate youth voice. I think that we need to understand that these issues are connected. So yes, we want our students graduating, but we have to take into consideration poverty, you know, food insecurity, trauma. What I learned about my newcomers is that every young person that arrives here has their own story. You know, what brought them here? Who's here with them? Who did they leave behind? All of this affects our education. I also think that we would benefit tremendously by having people of color in all aspects of school, you know? So we need more teachers of color, more counselors of color, more admin of color, more trustees of color. We need young people to feel empowered and to feel like they can see people that look like them in all levels of society. Another thing that I learned from my newcomers is that when you are new to a place or learning a language, you have missed out on so many of the experiences of your peers. And so I really think that if we want to increase graduation rates, we need to provide more safe activities for young people. I would love to open up a youth center. I think we need places for young people to be and learn skills and opportunities and be in safe areas. I think that we have to approach it holistically and wrap around. Yes, we want to increase the graduation rates, but they're influenced by so many other factors. And so I think that that's like the most important way to approach it and involving all stakeholders. We need to bring teachers to the table, the young people, their families. What is it that's really getting in the way of not being able to graduate high school? We have to address it because coming to America and being immigrants, I know being the daughter of immigrants, we value education. So how can we build a bridge between people's hopes and dreams and what they can accomplish? I will speak for myself from my experience in working with young people, it is so successful when you can relate to them and when you can build trust. I feel like, I feel like the work that I've done with young people here is so meaningful, and I could replicate it as a trustee because I know what it's like to be in these schools, working with the youth, listening to them, and creating solutions with them. So really, we have to bring young people to the table to work on the solutions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Samantha. Our final response will come from Gina Daly. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Thank you. So I want to follow on a comment that Samantha just made about talking to the youth about why this might be happening. I think it's really important that we figure out why so many of our English language learners are dropping out, because depending on the reasons why it's happening, that will change the type of interventions that we should be doing. So that's the first thing. We should be having more conversations, and we should be having early warnings that if we think people are in danger of potentially dropping out, maybe they're starting to be absent from school more often, that we do, we talk to them and try to have that relationship at that time. If the reason, as Marina suggested, is because of needing to support both their family here or their family back in the country of origin, I think we need to look at how can we use career and technical programs or partner with local businesses to try to create economic opportunity, perhaps through an internship or after-school job, so they can stay in school but still earn a little bit of income? Because I think the most important thing is, if that's what's holding them back, why can't we look for opportunities to try to create new programs and new opportunities for them? Because we know that it is a hardship if you feel that you have to help your family. We should help, we should meet them halfway and try to help them do that. If it's because, as Lynda suggested, you know, it's very hard to get through all of the English language learner classes, and we need to be having a whole-scale curriculum, we need to look at what are the sorts of gatekeeping that we're doing to keep English language learners out of the classes they need to graduate? There's a lot of unconscious bias that has been discovered, that people are sort of, decide that people are not ready for certain classes even when they are, or they get steered to, let's say, a two-year geometry curriculum as opposed to the one year. We need to be making sure that we're not unconsciously putting people into tracks that they can't graduate from. The last thing, and this was mentioned by a few people, is the need for more diverse hires. So diversity in our schools. But what the research has shown is that if you just hire one or two people that are diverse, you're setting them up for failure. What you actually need to do is create a cohort or a cluster of diversity hires so that they have the internal support to be able to make a difference. And so I think it's not enough to hire one or two or three people. We really need to be looking at what has worked in other circumstances and creating partnerships so that our graduates of San Rafael schools have an opportunity to come back and teach in those schools and work for the communities that they come from. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. We're going to move on to our final question. Academic achievement brings about economic vitality to the communities where people live and work. In essence, a growing and successful Latino population is good for everyone economically and socially because it serves to strengthen the labor force, create jobs, increase the community's purchasing power, and build new pathways to innovation and diverse leadership. Population increases and the rise in poverty rates among Latinos is a matter of serious Our final question comes from the Latinos and Education in Marin Issue Brief. What innovations are needed to better integrate schools with economic opportunity, community development, neighborhood well-being, and thriving communities? Lynda Jackson, please begin the response to this question. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Okay, thank you so much. If I understand the question, you're asking what innovations are needed to integrate our schools, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So I absolutely agree that this is something we need to do in San Rafael. By virtue of our land, our housing patterns, and our, where our schools are located and where the different types of housing are, we do have schools that are fairly segregated. We have worked hard to increase the diversity at the schools that were all white so that they do have Latinos attending, but for all Latino schools, we have not been able to diversify the way we want. So one of the things that I'd love to see is the programs like a bilingual school that we've been working on for now a couple of years and hope to be implementing next year if we can be back on site. And that would be a draw for many English language parents who want their children, like myself. We wanted our children to learn Spanish in the school. So if we can have schools like that that have a focus, another one would be a school that might have a music focus, so that students who are an arts focus, students that are really drawn to the cultural aspect of their lives could find a home, and it would be a diverse community. It would draw parents across the city that would want to be part of that. I think another way to do it is to really be working with Affordable Housing Advocacy, which is something I do. I know that Canal Alliance does as well. Housing is a huge issue for our low-income parents throughout the city. With affordable housing throughout the city, we can help, we can make progress on people being able to go to schools in a more diverse community. And finally, what we have done with our high schools is make them open to students north and south of the Hill, which has helped to integrate Terra Linda. So it is a much, much more diverse and wealthier campus spiritually and academically as a result. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. Our next response will come from Samantha Ramirez. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Okay, perfect. So thank you so much, Gina, for reminding me of my alumni plan. I definitely feel as a graduate from the school and a woman of color that there are enough young people that have made it through and received an education that we need to nurture the next generation. And so I think that when we're talking about well-being economically and in other ways, we need to cultivate our power in our own community, and we need to make sure that we can bring these young people that have graduated or are doing trades or have gone on to college. How can we pay you to give your time to nurture the next generation and pass on your skills? I also think that we need to find ways to give our community money and make sure that they can live in a way where they can have a better quality of life. We know that in Canal, we have more families living in apartments than just one family. And so how do we create more affordable housing so families could have their own house to themselves? I also know that that's challenging because of immigration status. And so I also think that we need to work with our local agencies to make sure that our immigrant community feels safe to be able to look for apartments on their own. I think we need to create safe partnerships within our community. I think that there's an incredible amount of resources that we need to be sharing with one another, and I'm talking about intellectual knowledge, you know? So there are some affluent people that could, our doctors, our lawyers, our successful college professors. How do we get them to help our community and pass that knowledge down to us? Because that's what we've been deprived of. I also think that we need to create safe spaces where we're able to talk about what our experience is like. For example, for me, being a Latina running for office in Marin County, I've never seen somebody do it, and so who mentors me? Who helps me? Well, now I'm going to be able to give that to the other, to young people that come after me. But I think we really need to create more networks and more webs where young people can have people to look up to and to give them knowledge and information. And I think that that's how we're going to move ahead. We need to start thinking about the greater whole and providing more people the same opportunities, because I think we're seeing pockets of success. You know, I'm somebody that made it. I know a lot of other young people that made it. And so I think we have to really learn about what helped us get through and how do we pass that down? For me, it was working at nonprofits, being a leader in the community. That's what helped me get to where I am today. So I think that building the youth center, having a strong alumni network, I think the lunches are super important because we need to be feeding our bodies healthy food and nutrients so that our days can be the best that they can be, so that we have the best outlook at our lives and our day. And so I think that we really need to have a more holistic approach to what is equity and how we are going to further where Latinos are, because I have been here my entire life since first grade, and I'm really excited to be able to be a leader in this.
Thank you, Samantha. Our next response will come from Gina Daly. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Thanks. So I think there's really two ways to look at this. There's what can we do that is urgent and what is a longer-term solution? When I spoke to Omar at the Canal Alliance, he said, "These issues are not new," but he hasn't felt that there's been a lot of urgency behind them. So the urgent things that I would do is I would make our schools sort of the one-stop shop for families and students to be able to access all the social services that they are entitled to. I've done a lot of research on homeless students, speaking with county advocates, researching the McKenney-Vento Act, which is the federal legislation that says that if you are a housing insecure student, you have access to all sorts of additional funding and support services. But unfortunately, right now, the school districts have different homeless liaisons almost every year, and they hold a lot of different positions. And so that person hasn't been as successful in identifying the students and providing the services they need. That is an urgent action. The other urgent action that Samantha raised is about nutrition. So because of the pandemic, pandemic EBT was put into effect by the USDA. But unfortunately, that is actually ending. And so a lot of students that used to be able to get more money to their CalFresh account, that program is ending. And we need to make sure that we not only advocate to the state that that funding be brought back, but also we remove any barriers to making sure food insecure students have access to that food. One thing that has been successful at UC Berkeley is we have CalFresh clinics, and we actually partner with the county to be able to bring people on campus and sign people up. There was a report I read that only a third of people in Marin that are eligible for CalFresh, which is the food stamp program, actually are in it. That's something we can change immediately. The other thing, but more longer term, I love the idea of a bilingual school. I think that is something that everyone in our community can benefit from and should be implemented quickly. The other thing that is a missing resource, but potentially a great one, is the property at 1585 Vento Avenue, oh, sorry, Vendela Avenue. So this is an old school. It's owned by the school district. That could be used for affordable housing, or it could be sold, and then we could use that money to have additional support services for people, for students and families in our community. A huge support of affordable housing. I wrote my master's thesis for the city and county of San Francisco, looking at how the city could help keep teachers employed in the school district. And the number one thing they wanted was help with housing. It's the same with our teachers. And if we have more affordable housing for our public servants and our families, that will reduce the overcrowding that we see in the canal, and we need to make sure that everyone who wants to be in this community is able to afford to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Our final response will come from Marina Palma. You have three minutes to share your answer.
Thank you. To me, it's very clear that poverty affects our Latino students because they are facing this party of having to deal with being a low-income versus the medium or high-income families in Marin. As poverty is beyond their control, they can face challenges that affect their brain, their emotional well-being, and their school achievement, not leaving the fact that they are English ESL students, English as a second language. Latinos are very important. They're very important in this economy. Now that COVID-19 is with us, they're calling our Latino laborers, they're calling them essential workers. To me, we've been essential workers like for a very, very long time. So the education situation needs to be resolved. We, I believe that we need to invest in all students and more in the Latino students by giving children the acknowledge of opportunities that could be ahead of them, given the resources of other programs. I think that we need to create politics that will ensure all children will take the A through G classes to succeed in their higher level of education. And as Samantha was saying, and I believe I heard Gina saying too, not everyone probably doesn't want to go to a four-year higher education, but to have a path, a path in place for those who are not interested in going to school. have a path, a path in place for those who are not interested in going to school, I mean, in going to a four-year education. We also need to teach our Latino children social, emotional learning strategies. We need to involve their, their parents. Education should not, the parents should know that education should not be an option. They need, parents need to motivate their children. They need to support their children and communicate with the teachers. I think that if we create a safe place for all of them, where they can express how they feel, what goals they have, and they can feel they're being heard, I think that we're gonna start something really good for all of them. Because I honestly believe that if we do resolve all the issues with our Latino students, all children will benefit from it. I thank you so much.
Thank you, Marina. So we're coming to the end of our, our forum here. We want to thank Desire to Inspire for providing the innovative technology and expertise, enabling us to share this event live in two languages simultaneously. We'd also like to thank Naomi Gonzalez-Rocha for providing simultaneous interpretation in Spanish for this event. Thank you, candidates, for joining us this evening and sharing your vision and perspectives. You will each have one minute for a brief closing statement. We really got to know all of you well this evening, and I appreciate you engaging with us. Samantha Ramirez, please begin the closing statements. You have a minute.
All right. Thank you so much for hosting this space. I really appreciate it. I just want to say that all students benefit when all students thrive. I'm very passionate about addressing equity in our district. I have personal experience, and I have a lot of professional experience in the community. I think that I am going up against an amazing candidate. But right now in 2020, I am the best choice for this role. I represent over half of SRCS, not only by being bilingual, but also being bi-cultural. I know the students, I know the families, I know the community, and it would be such an amazing honor to be your representative for trustee area one. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Samantha. Gina Daly, please share your closing statement. You have one minute.
Well, I want to thank Canal Alliance for the opportunity to talk about these really important issues. It really can't be undersold. The Latinx community is the future of this county, and we need to make sure that every, as Samantha said, every single student, every family thrives. That is fundamentally why I'm running. What I bring to the table is a lot of experience building coalitions. It's not enough to have the right policy idea. You have to get it over the finish line. And so I have a track record of putting together support, moving policies, and working in tandem with underrepresented minority groups to do that work. If I'm your trustee, I want to help you realize your full potential. And the way I'll do that is by doing a lot of listening and less talking. My job will be to provide a platform and a strategy to help you achieve your own policy goals. It's not about me, it's about you. And so I hope that you will take a look at my qualifications. And regardless of how you vote, I want to help support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Marina Palma, please share your closing statement. You have one minute.
I want to thank Canal Alliance for, for putting this forum together. I think, and thank for all those, all, all those who are watching. It means that it is very extremely important that we take steps now. I know that the future depends on what we do today. And I want to let you know that my heart is with the Canal community. And I will do my best as a board trustee representing District Five to advocate for the well-being and education of our children and their families. Please reach out, and we'll be there for you. But whatever is going to change, which is going to be for the best, we gotta be in this together. That means parents, teachers, trustee boards, and the different identities that can help us raise our kids for a better future. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Marina. Linda Jackson, please share your closing statement. You have one minute.
Thank you. Well, I have been honored to be a trustee for 14 years on the Board of Education. My husband and I chose San Rafael because we wanted our children to be part of a diverse community and go to diverse schools. San Rafael is a unique place for that. When my daughter went off to college, one of them, she found out she was the only one who went to an integrated high school. Everybody else lived in segregated communities. This makes for the richest education possible for all of our students. But we have to do more to make sure each one is successful. And with the Equity Blueprint initiatives, Student Voice, and I invite everybody to listen in to Student Voice Town Hall tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon. Our teachers are using their best skills for online learning, parents who are working hard to understand and be supportive for their students, and then community partners like Canal Alliance. We can make the difference. So our, all of our students will have success. I appreciate the interest of all the candidates, look forward to serving you and with your energy for change and new ways of doing things for public education together, we will make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. As a reminder, in order to support these candidates, you have to register to vote. So if you are not registered to vote, please go to canalalliance.org. We have links for you to register to vote online. We also have an assistant center on Thursday afternoons from four to seven, right out in front of Canal Alliance. So it's really important to register to support these wonderful candidates. And if you're already registered to vote, make sure that your address is up to date because all ballots will be mailed in November. So even if you are registered, check to be sure you have the most updated address. So the ballot gets to you and you can vote for these candidates in the upcoming election. I want to say good night to everyone and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you for joining us.